Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Tuesday, November 28th, 2023 Escondido Planning Commission meeting. If you would all please rise. Commissioner McCarroll will lead this. May we have the roll call, please?
Chair Paul?
Yes, President.
Vice Chair Barbe?
Present.
Commissioner Barber?
Here.
Commissioner Fitzgerald?
Present.
Commissioner McCarroll?
Here.
Commissioner Spear?
Present.
Commissioner Wild?
Here.
First item of business tonight is approval of the minutes. Do I have any questions or a motion?
Move approval of the minutes.
I'll second.
Please vote.
One more, please. Our voting has been open.
Mine's stuck.
You can voice your rule if you'd like.
Try it one more time. It'll be a yes.
And Commissioner Fitzgerald?
We did go through what we first. Um, yes.
And there'll be, um, six votes for ye, for approval of the minutes with one abstain from Commissioner McCarroll.
Next item is written and oral communications. Do we have any written communications on something not submitted, not on the agenda?
None at this time.
And is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on an item not on the agenda? Okay, seeing none, we'll move to the public hearings. The first one, uh, PL twenty-three dash zero three three two Sierra Madre Cantina. I'd like to ask commissioners, um, if they have any disclosure. Can we start with... To my left?
I have nothing to disclose.
I do have a disclosure. There is a conflict of interest. I did have a fundraiser and he was, um, a donor. And so I'm going to go ahead and recuse myself on this.
Thank you.
None.
Okay, um, I just, I've been to the restaurant, um, when this owner has it, and I've been to the restaurant previously with other owners.
Nothing at this time?
Nothing at this time.
And I have well, um, I've been to the restaurant with prior and this.
And, uh, staff report, Melissa DiMarzo?
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Melissa DiMarzo, Assistant Planner with the City of Escondido. Um, the item before you tonight is a request to modify an existing conditional use permit allowing live entertainment and alcohol service at an existing restaurant. The project site is, is an existing restaurant located in the Felicita Plaza Commercial Center situated on the corner of South.
Sorry, could I, can I just interrupt for a second? We're having a technical difficulty up here. I just want to stop you for a second.
No.
Link, but I can, I can look at Rip.
I guess we just need to turn them on, I guess.
No, I turned mine on. No, I turned mine on, but I think the water. I broke it. Yeah. Oh.
Thank you, sorry about that.
The project site is an existing restaurant located in the Felicita Plaza Commercial Center situated on the corner of South Center City Parkway and West Felicita Avenue. The existing restaurant is located between a bank and a nail salon and a butts commercial uses to the east. The project site is within the Felicita Commercial District of the South Center City Specific Plan, and this district allows for a variety of retail and other commercial uses. The conditional use permit was previously issued for this address in two thousand and eleven. This CUP allowed for live entertainment and dancing until midnight, but required alcohol service to cease once the kitchen was closed. Currently, the kitchen closes at nine P M. Additionally, the prior CUP prevented the restaurant from charging an entry fee. While A B C conditions currently allow alcohol service until one A M and live entertainment until twelve A M on specified days, the more restrictive CUP conditions prevail. The applicant had previously filed a request to modify the conditions of the CUP on November fourth of two thousand and twenty-two. This request included live entertainment until one thirty A M Thursdays, Fridays, Saturdays, and special event holidays, kitchen closure at nine P M, and the ability to assess a cover charge. The hearing was originally set for February twenty-eighth of two thousand and twenty-three. It was continued by the applicant to March fourteenth, and ultimately was withdrawn by the applicant on March thirteenth of two thousand and twenty-three. The applicant has now filed a request to allow live entertainment until one o'clock A M on Thursdays, Fridays, Saturdays, and for special events and holidays with alcohol service until one A M. Applicant would like to keep the kitchen closed after nine P M all days, and the applicant has also requested the ability to charge cover. The existing restaurant occupies almost five thousand square feet of space within the multi-tenant building, which is part of the nine-acre Felicita Plaza Commercial Center. This slide shows an overview of the current layout for the restaurant, including proposed live entertainment areas as outlined in red. There would be a specific area for live bands as well as a D J, and the center areas in red would be designated dance floor area. The planning division learned of several operational infractions the existing restaurant experienced in the time leading up to the formal CUP application's withdrawal request. Specifically, city staff were informed of non-compliance with certain conditions required by the CUP in effect and A B C license through the police department. In addition, the Escondido Police Department received four calls for service between May and November of two thousand and twenty-two. However, between April and November of two thousand and twenty-three, no code violations or calls for service occurred. The applicant has filed a request to allow live entertainment until one o'clock A M on Thursdays, Fridays, Saturdays, and for special events and holidays with alcohol service until one A M. The applicant would like to keep the kitchen closed after nine P M all days. Applicant has also requested the ability to charge cover. Staff has met with all interested parties, including the police department regarding this request. At this time, staff recommends the kitchen close at eleven P M, not nine P M, and allow live entertainment and alcohol service until one A M on Thursdays, Fridays, Saturdays, and specified holidays. Staff is also supportive of allowing a cover charge. Staff recommends approval of the CUP request as modified in the conditions of approval under Resolution number two thousand and twenty-three dash twenty-one, because while A B C has noted license violations and P D has had calls for service in the past, no violations have been issued since the withdrawal of the prior application. The proposed CUP is also consistent with the permitted uses in the existing commercial center and does not represent a substantial change in operations. This project is categorically exempt from environmental review under CEQA Guideline, Section fifteen three oh one, for existing facilities, as it involves only operational changes to an existing restaurant facility. A notice of exemption has been prepared and will be filed for this project. At this time, staff has received no public comments on the current CUP request. This concludes staff's presentation. Planning staff, police staff, and the applicant are available to address any questions at this time.
Would the applicant like to speak? Is there anyone else in the audience that'd like to speak on this issue? Okay.
Hello, my name is Juan Magaña. I am the owner of Sierra Madre Cantina, and I want to thank you all for giving me the ability to come up here and, um, present what I'm asking for. I've been in the community for, for some time, and I try to work with the community as much as possible and give back to the community. I try to get involved with the community. Part of getting involved with the community, I've been asked by many of the, uh, customers to ask if we can potentially, you know, do some business, because they like to stay here in town and come out and dance and have a good time. Uh, this was what drove me to, uh, put music on and do the dance. The cabaret license was already available when, when it took over the restaurant. We had great success, uh, and what I mean by great success is a lot of people that come in here are happy, because they don't, no longer have to leave Escondido to, uh, to Macula Oceanside, or wherever. They can stay in their own backyard and have a good time, uh, and go home. The way I like to look at it is like going to a wedding or a quinceañera, you come out, have dinner, and you stay for the dance. So, uh, I hope that you're able to take a look at everything that is provided, and, you know, we keep a pretty low-key place, uh, and hoping that you take this into account and allow me to proceed with what I'm looking to do.
All right, thank you. Does, does anyone have a question?
Yes, I have a question. There's been previous violations at the Cantina, and unfortunately, in your original application that we received, you failed to disclose those violations, and you failed to disclose the calls from the police department when there were problems with patrons at the property. So how can you assure us that if we approve of this conditional use permit, that you will remain consistently in compliance? And what steps are you taking to help reduce the risk of physical fighting, which the police have been called on in the past?
Okay, on a previous application, um, I did get a, uh, I actually went to the police department and I got their, uh, the record of all the calls coming to the, uh, to the restaurant. And I also met with the chief of police, and to my knowledge and to according to those, uh, reports, there was only one fistfight. And that is, was in about a year, about a year and a half's time, of course. Which is not bad when you consider we're doing advance Fridays and Saturdays to have one fistfight. It's pretty good. As far as how do we, how do we work on, on maintaining, uh, or keeping the police department away is by, uh, security. You know, I always have security there from day one, uh, and we always, we patrol the, the lot to make sure that there's no consumption of alcohol, because sometimes people like to go out, the vehicle, have a drink, come back in. At that point in time, we have no idea what they're drinking, and then they could be over served, or I'm, I'm the one liable for that. So when they're caught, they're, they're, they're not allowed to come in. Any individual that goes in and comes out, uh, we always have security at the door. If they step out to go grab something out of their car, uh, we make sure that, you know, there, there's, there's nothing going on, and they're not out there arguing with anybody. So we do our best we can to, uh, to patrol and monitor, uh, myself included. I'm in there, uh, just walking around, just making sure everybody's out here.
But actually has that there were four calls involving the police department regarding fighting, but that's all right. I'm not that concerned about the past. I'm concerned about now going on into the future. I'm satisfied with your response.
Anyone else?
Sure, thank you. Um, I guess the, the one concern that I had was of course the same as Commissioner Barber. But another one is underage drinking, and I see, you know, that there's going to be food served, so it still is operating like a restaurant, but at some point it becomes more of a nightclub than a restaurant. What steps are going to be taken to ensure that young people that are in there are not, you know, they're in a place with the liquor and the dancing and everything functions out as a normal nightclub, but you got kids in there as well? So how, how do we make sure that we're not creating a, uh, an atmosphere that could be harmful for these underage kids?
That's a great question. Well, being that we are a restaurant, we do have people in there dining prior to the music starting and the dancing, and that's okay if we have that. At nine, about nine o'clock, uh, the individuals are going to stay, uh, we have our security go out, check their I Ds, and we put a band on them. So anybody that's in that restaurant has a wristband, and not just a regular wristband, I actually have initials on them. So this way, if somebody came from another place, we've always got wristbands, we're, we're, we're good. So I, I invest it in making sure that all wristbands have our initials on there, so, and they're colorful. They're bright green, or, and if they're having dinner, it's a bright, uh, pink, so people are coming in. So if they don't have a wristband, then we know to check, we know not to serve, and, uh, it's just our way of checking. And then all, uh, all, uh, individuals that are in there, uh, are aware or know, if they're going to have a party, we let them know, hey, about nine-thirty, we cannot have anyone, uh, uh, underage at one o'clock. So if they're going to go out, say, hey, we're going to have a family reunion or whatnot, they know that by a certain time, the, uh, the, the patrons that are between one will have to leave. We also take it a step further. Anyone that shows up with a, say, well, hey, I got a picture on my phone, you know, my, my I D, we don't, uh, you guys, it's too easily modified, you know. We're, we're, we do our best, our diligence to, to make sure that we keep that in hand, taking questions.
All right, thank you. That answered my question, I appreciate it. Actually, I'll go ahead, Barry. I had an additional question came to my mind. So you're requesting the food service stop at nine P M, but the police department has advised staff that they feel more comfortable with food being served up until eleven P M, because they feel, uh, those, uh, those stomachs being filled with food helps reduce the effects of being intoxicated and reduce the risk of you having problems on your property and reduce the risk of intoxicated drivers leaving. So do you understand the recommendation by staff for eleven P M dinner service? And would you accept that if that's what is approved?
Yes, I'm okay with that, and I, I do accept.
You have something? Okay, so the one thing that I wanted to ask about is, is how you want us to reconcile the nine o'clock versus eleven o'clock? And I guess I'm hearing you say you're okay with eleven o'clock.
Yes, I'm okay with eleven o'clock.
Okay. And, um, so there's, um, a couple of other items that were in the, in the staff report, and one of them talks about, um, the do, the doors being closed and no outdoor amplified, uh, music or noise. Are you, you aware of that condition?
About the doors being closed?
Yeah, while there's, where there's music or in the, I don't know what, I don't remember if it has a time on it, or if it just says all the time the doors are supposed to be closed or, or whatever, and no amplified music outside.
Okay, we don't have amplified music. Uh, I do have, and I took a picture, uh, every day we'll set up lunch for dinner, put a tiny little speaker outside, uh, just for my morning background noise, so as you're sitting out there, you just don't hear the cars driving back and forth. Uh, that, that speaker gets turned off at, at, uh, eight, uh, eight P M, and like I said, I did take a pictures, so you guys can get a, an idea of... Let me see, this, this tiny little guy right here. Go ahead and put it up in front of you. But I guess just literally, we have people that maybe sit out there so that they don't feel so left out, so whatever music's playing on the inside plays, uh, outside. We've never had any amplified music from a D J or a band on the outside.
Okay, and there's also, um, well, I think I've just, okay, I'm, I'm all set. You have something?
Thank you. Um, to piggyback off of, off of the sound, um, I know we're talking about an increase in the entertainment time to a later time, correct?
Correct.
That would be one, one A M, is that correct?
That is correct.
Currently karaoke and dancing is part of the live entertainment inside, is that correct?
Currently, yes.
Okay. So that karaoke is amplified music inside the building, I would assume, or microphone?
Yes, inside.
Okay. Currently, how is that, I, I'm thinking there's sound that, that is amplified inside the building. How, if we're, especially if we're extending the entertainment hours on this, how do we keep the neighborhood from getting the sound coming out of the building at one o'clock in the morning?
Uh, we don't, we won't do, uh, the nights that I'm requesting for the, it's Thursday, Friday, Saturday, we don't do karaoke those times.
Okay, but the live entertainment could occur during those times, if, if there's a change, I mean...
The, the live entertainment that would occur, occur on any time out of, out of that would be, when I mean my live entertainment, D J, uh, band and stuff, would be for like a CEQA, the May or Mother's Day or something of that nature, that it doesn't fall on a Thursday or a Friday or a Saturday. So we, I just, you know, wanted to make sure we cover those bases of other days on a, uh, on a Tuesday or something of that nature. And I mean Mexican Mother's Day or something, uh, American Mother's Days, uh, on a Sunday. Uh, and we want to do mariachi or something of that nature. That's, that's why those, you, I requested those, uh, special holidays.
So previously, the, the conditional use permit, I think, covered holidays as they occurred on the day. So for example, if it was a weekday, the holiday fell on a weekday, the CUP had the same...
Yes.
Stipulations. You're asking for something...
Just to continue.
Different than that?
No, I'm just asking to continue. You know, uh, and, and what I mean by continuing, I also mean like one, one A M. I don't want to say, well, hey, the holiday lands on a Saturday, so I just want to make sure that, you know, we can continue to play music till one A M. All I'm, all I'm asking for is extension of the music, it's supposed to be nights, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, not, not asking for a Monday or a Sunday or a different day.
So, if I may interject, just to clarify, the CUP would grant the one-hour extension along with the, well, really the one-hour extension for Tuesdays, excuse me, Thursdays, Fridays, and Saturdays, as well as the listed holidays. So if those listed holidays fell on a non-Thursday, Friday, Saturday, they would have the ability to extend to one A M under the proposed CUP.
So that is a change from the current CUP?
I'll defer to the project planner on that one.
Yeah, so we had requested a specific, um, list of holidays from the applicant, um, just to have those specified days. So what was on...
Page twelve shows that, that the existing is consistent with regular hours depending on the day of the week, and the request is live entertainment until one A M. So that would, I, um, would that be a change on these specific listed six holidays or special event days?
If I might, if I may, I believe all we're trying to do is just verify what are special holidays? Just before they weren't listed.
Yes, so we had requested specific holidays, just so that we were aware of what those specific days, um, would be. Um, that was something that we wanted also for P D to be aware of as well. Um, so we do have those specific days listed.
I'm, I'm sorry, Melissa. I, I think the commissioner is asking about the hours, if the, if the previous CUP went until one o'clock or not.
Or the hours, oh, the previous CUP. So the hours on the previous CUP, I believe, were also consistent with the twelve o'clock, that was the prior.
Is that your question?
I'm just trying to assess whether this amplifies the six days, if they happen to fall on a, um... If we're changing these six days, if they happen to fall on a weekday, for example, it's not a Thursday or a Friday, then are we amplifying those to a later time because they happen to hit on a holiday? That would be a change from previous, I believe.
That is correct.
So we are, we are changing those potentially, because, those six days. Got it, thank you.
Thank you very much, Juan.
You can go sit, sit down.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone have any questions at staff? Wow. Okay.
I am, in, in looking at the previous, uh, conditional use permit, we go back to that briefly here. I'm trying to understand the intent of that and understand whether that's an intent that we're changing. So as I read what it says here, um, under live entertainment and dancing, section A on page thirteen, it says, under the previous CUP, the facility is permitted to operate as a restaurant with incidental alcohol sales and live entertainment with dancing. And then it says, these conditions of approval require live entertainment to end no later than midnight. Conditions applied to the CUP also require food to be available for purchase at all times and prohibit the business from assessing the cover charge. These are some of the changes that have been requested. So going back to the question of the intent, why did the previous CUP say, look, we want you to operate as a restaurant selling alcohol and having entertainment and dancing? And we want you to maintain certain conditions, those listed? Uh, and I assume that the, the, the requirement was, as it states, to operate as a restaurant with the ability to sell alcohol, and not as a nightclub? And I, I'm assuming that's why the conditions were put into place. I think by making these changes, we're changing the use. We're saying, past a certain time, we're no longer a restaurant operating as a, as, as incidental alcohol sales, we're now operating as a nightclub. And we're saying, so we're going to charge a cover fee, we're going to cut the, the food. All of these specific conditions that were applied before to prevent that type of use are now being changed. So with that change in use, then I ask the question, is this neighborhood and is the community an appropriate place for that activity? I know we have this activity within the city, we have it on grand, it extends till two o'clock in the morning. The question is, is this the right place for this activity? I know that there have been reports of crime or other activities, um, occurred previously. Are we exacerbating that by saying, well, let's, let's change the use, let's increase the, the time, let's decrease the food element, let's make this a different type of use? Looking at the con, so I guess, I guess that maybe if there's a question in this, it is, am I right in assuming that these conditions, that the, the goal of these conditions was to maintain, as it states, a restaurant rather than a nightclub in this neighborhood? Do we know that? Intent of these conditions originally?
Yes, thank you for that question. So the original CUP from two thousand and eleven is for a primary restaurant use as set by the conditions, and under the proposed modification, it would still continue to operate primarily as a restaurant. Um, draft condition number seven continues to mandate that their quarterly gross sales of alcohol be less than that of their food, their, their gross food sales have to be greater, um, based on their full hours of operation as proposed. Two hours would be of, of that time would be kitchen closure, um, where the use would operate as, you know, ancillary, um, nightclub or bar, which is a permitted, conditionally permitted use within the zone. However, they're not proposing to operate primarily as that use, which is why they are not coming in for a CUP for a bar or nightclub, because more than fifty percent of their gross sales and their operations day to day are that of a, a restaurant.
Second question I have is regarding other businesses that operate with, um, under conditions where they would generate potential noise, amplified, uh, sound. Do we have in other areas, nightclubs or other, other, other parts of town where we have a decimal requirement, a performance requirement on, on noise, rather than just, we hope you shut the door? How do we, how do we carry out that in other parts of the city?
Yes, so the city does maintain a overall city... Yes, so the city does maintain an overall citywide noise ordinance that is based on zone and associated uses. And so regardless of what type of use, you are subject to that noise ordinance, which includes hours of day. So after 10:00 p.m., a certain noise level cannot be exceeded. As part of their conditions of approval, they have no ability to amplify noise outdoors regardless of a speaker being present. The CUP does not permit for amplified outdoor noise. And then they would be required to maintain all those doors and windows, if any, shut as a requirement of the CUP. In the event there was noise issues, we would most likely be alerted to that through the code compliance route, in which case our code enforcement staff, our code compliance staff would go out to the site and take noise readings to determine whether or not they're in violation of our noise ordinance.
Is there a number then, in terms of what would apply here? If someone were to, if the neighbors were to say, hey, this is really loud at night, they're opening the doors? They would come out from code compliance, they'd say, here's the threshold, you guys can't, what is that threshold?
I don't know it off the top of my head, but I can find out and get it to you.
Okay. Any other questions as staff?
I will ask staff following up on this. They currently have entertainment until midnight. Is there any history of noise complaints from the surrounding neighborhood?
Not that I'm aware of.
Yeah, I don't see any mention that they've ever had a problem with noise. I'm not really seeing, especially given the conditions that have been added in the staff recommendation, it seems to me that based on their history and the conditional conditions of operating, I'm not foreseeing noise being that high of a risk with what the application is requesting.
And I'm, okay, so I have one more that didn't get asked. So in an email I sent earlier, I talked about page 39, condition D1, and I didn't get a response to that question. And specifically, D1 says, "Alcohol sales for outdoor onsite consumption shall be permitted between the hours of 9:00 a.m. and 11:00 p.m." And I don't know why or that's in here.
So the restaurant use does have an outdoor dining area that was permitted under the emergency, I'm going to misname this, but essentially the emergency COVID order. And so as part of their restaurant operations, allowing outdoor alcohol consumption onsite in the outdoor dining area would be under the purview of the CUP.
Okay, thank you. Okay, time for deliberations, guys.
Well, I'd just like to say thanks to my fellow commissioners for asking some really good questions. I'm in support of this project application.
If there's no further discussion, I'll make a motion to approve the application as conditioned by staff and approve resolution 2023-21.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, go for the question.
Voting has been opened. Don't that working over there? Vote is 6-0 to approve.
Okay, next item. Oh, somebody get you? Next item, PHG 20-0036, South Center City Parkway Specific Plan Amendment. Let's start again with disclosure, but Judy's not here, so we'll start on the other end.
Yeah, I have a disclosure, I'm going to have to recuse myself just so that there's not an appearance of financial bias. Mr. Whalen and myself are working on another project here in the city of Escondido.
Eric?
Nothing.
Nothing at this time.
Okay, I need to say, I was, when I was on the site, I was approached by one of the employees, so I did have a 10-minute conversation with one of the employees.
Nothing.
Judy, we're moving to the next item, if you have a disclosure or not.
I do not.
Nothing to disclose.
Okay, staff report is Jay Paul.
Yes, good evening, Commissioner, so I'm Jay Paul, Senior Planner. Tonight's agenda item is a request of certain components. It includes an amendment to the South Center City Area Plan to allow the density and amount of units for the project that is targeted by the developer. It includes also a new block for the site planning and architecture and a density bonus request for additional units and affordable units for the project. So it is a mixed-use project that contains residential, affordable units and a commercial components. The existing site is located approximately 4.0, 4.46 acres, less than an half an acre at the corner of Escondido Boulevard. And I am currently occupied by four commercial units, Jordy's Liquor and others, and a small parking lot that serves the site and the existing businesses. These are photos of the existing use, you can see the various buildings. There is an alleyway that provides access here on South Escondido Boulevard and the parking lot here on Ninth. And this is the view looking at Ninth Avenue to the site. A brief overview of the project, it includes the redevelopment of the existing commercial buildings and redevelopment of the site with a four-story, 21-unit portable project that will retain approximately 1,400 square feet of commercial area on the bottom floor with an overall density of approximately 45.6 dwelling units per acre. They will contain 27 to 100 garage style without garage doors, parking spaces for the units. It includes a contemporary style of architecture with a lot of, I guess, for the word is, incentives in roofline architecture and other elements to blend in with the neighborhood. Also, the individual units, walls, the individual balconies facing the power source towards the project. How did we get here? The project started out with a direct role of 21 units and to provide affordable units. And they hooked in various techniques on how to make that happen within the two districts that the project is located in. It's located in the South Center City Parkway Area Plan, but in two different districts. The corner parcel is in within the Escondido neighborhood or Escondido Boulevard district. Commercial district, it does not allow for essential uses. The smaller parcel here is within the Ninth Avenue district with eight, and you can see the dots on there in the site. That means that it's in the overlay, mixed-use overlay district. That allows residential development of 24 dwellings per acre and a height of 35 feet. The commercial district with the larger parcel on it allows for commercial development of 226 units. So how do you accommodate this project at that density and those units and those heights? So looking at all of the different new housing laws, SB 9, SB 10, how do you get there? And eventually, it was what through the civic plan and a density bonus would meet those targeted units and that project design. Therefore, the applicant is requesting that the mixed-use overlay stay on the Ninth Avenue district with the height limits and the density. The corner parcel, the mixed-use overlay, which is on South Escondido Boulevard, probably south of the site, would extend on to the site. It will allow maximum density of 30 dwelling units per acre and also amend the height limit to 45 feet. So that's how they get the base density, how they get to 21 units. So a base density would allow 13 dwelling units, so we estimate 24 dwelling units per acre and 30 comes out to base 13 units. Apply the density bonus with 15% of the units restricted to very low income. They get up to seven additional density bonus units for a total of 20. To get to that additional unit, they would apply one of their allowance sentences for one additional. So that's how you get to 21 dwelling units per acre and 25, or 21 units to 45 dwelling units per acre. As part of the density bonus request, it allows service incentives and concession guidelines. The project qualifies for three of them, that includes the additional unit for 21 units. Increase in height, so above that, you can go above 45 feet requested by the specific plan. The density bonus allows you to go to additional height to meet your building design. So up to 47 feet, and that's not 47 feet to the round of the project, that's the highest point on that very roof line. Also reduction in parking, the project will provide 27 residential spaces, twelve most of the tandem spaces, which is also allowed in the district but through the development process. So it was requested as one of the additional incentives and concessions for the project. 45 are required, so they're asking reduction in the residential parking and elimination of the commercial parking. To handle that commercial parking and the potential future uses, the design of South Escondido Boulevard District project, and I'll go through that in additional pictures, will still provide those on-street parking, up to potentially seven. The final design will be based on the design for site, the setup and driveways, and whether they want to have a potential loading zone for deliveries or when residents move in to the project and have one of those set aside for that. Additional waivers, density bonus are allowed unlimited amount of waivers, provided it will allow the development of the project. The additional waivers are reduction in setbacks, they're not major reductions, they're allowed for some improvements on the ground or into the setback, not the right way. And also on upper shorty overhangs, where it will overhang into the alley right away in some of the eyebrow features, but will not affect the public property or pedestrian movements. Design requirements, elimination of the upper story setback, requires an eight-foot setback above to the second floor, and I'll show you how they requested that, but how they designed the project to meet those design standards through other measures, but are still asking for waiver, you can read that in the letter on the law with that. Reduct, asking for reduction in open space from 6,300 square feet to 48,000. We've seen that request through most of our high maintenance projects, South Escondido Boulevard and downtown because trying to meet those target higher densities for those target areas, it's very difficult to meet open space requirements. They also asking for a tandem spaces. We will require a party management book on how they program those spaces for the two-story units and how any additional spaces are programmed for guests or use of them. The final one, they're asking for a direct financial incentive waiver. They're asking to waive the requirement to offset ongoing funding for municipal services or the CFD requirement. Staff, you can ask that through a waiver or additionally through council waiver of it. And that's how that policy has been waived through other projects or affordable projects in the past. It still requires council decision on that, but planning commission can make a recommendation regarding that waiver of fees. Staff is not supporting that, we're supporting the city policy. However, planning commission and council have waived that for several other affordable projects which have been passed. Overall project briefly, the ground floor includes a, the ground floor is where the commercial development go to 100 square feet. It will maintain that view and look on the ground floor and those pedestrian level amenities. Also, a central entry lobby, trash area accessible through the parking lot and all the mechanical spaces. They do have a central courtyard and courtyard area centrally that goes up through open step through the project and all units look down into that central courtyard. So that's another amenity, one of the amenities for the project. The part of these spaces will be accessed through either through the alley or cell phone or through a new driveway here off of Ninth Avenue. So coming in through here, and this Ninth Avenue and the alley will allow drive, limited drive or access through that alley to Ninth Avenue. The second floor contains, the second and third floor are very similar, contain the bulk of the units. They include four one-bedroom units and 17 two-bedroom units. Interior access is provided to all the units rather than access out to the street. They have to come in through the internal lobby and access it that way. The units have an interior common terrace that look down through the various levels, and there's individual unit balconies on common terraces for each home unit. The first floor here also open to two-low. And the fourth floor section here. The roof up the fourth level would be a standing seam metal roof and equipment wells for equipment up there if necessary. But most of that equipment will be down in the project. Very quickly, the unit is here, 20 beds. They range from 1,000 square feet to approximately 1,266 square feet, so they are fair-sized apartments. I want to show you the architecture and how the step back on that third level is accomplished. So as you look through, this is the south elevation on South Escondido Boulevard. So you've got these internal courtyards and the terraces. You'll look through various portions of the building, so you're not going to get all that massive scale on the street. Also, the balconies step back significantly. So you're going to get that variation in the wall planes, so you don't have a lot of, all that massive scale right on Ninth Avenue and South Escondido Boulevard. You can also see the very roof line, so you don't have one flat roof and parapet feature there. These are the views from the west elevation and the north elevation. So access through or into the garage areas that aren't as visible as the street views. This is in the concept plan for landscaping. See the interior courtyard and some of the plaza levels and the street design. I'd like to also point out, the intersection will be opened out. It provides two features. Number one, enhances public safety ahead of intersection. Will allow better crosswalk access and potentially as the others be developed, potentially that may be expanded to those corners too. So it also serves as a bit of traffic control as you round that corner. It's designed so large trucks, emergency vehicles also can turn on that corner and make that radius. With this design, it will preserve the on-street parking spaces for the project that can be used for the commercial component. An environmental review, a flannel initial study mitigated or negative declaration was adopted for the South Center City Parkway Area Plan. The project applicant created a tandem to look at all the potential direct impacts and the project qualifies for it then. The project did not have any additional direct sensitive impacts that weren't already addressed in the final met-up. However, we did have consultation with the neighborhood trust. And they didn't have any specific issues with the project because it had been previously developed. However, there's always that potential for hidden vertical discoveries. So they wanted to have our standard conditions placed on the project with monitors during the grain operations that they would be there. And if anything, if a vertical was discovered, there's the proper protocols in place to address those issues and that associated any concerns they have with the project. Staff is recommending that, the planning commission recommended the council to approve the amendment to the South Center City Specific Plan, approve the major plot plan and density bonus, along with the incentives, concessions and waivers. However, to staff's recommendation, to deny the request for additional waiver of municipal funding obligation and to adopt the tandem to the negative declaration. That concludes staff's presentation, if you have any questions, you may ask.
Thank you, Jay. Would the applicant like to speak first? Juan?
Thanks, Jay. That was a really good presentation. Jim Whalen, Day Whalen Associates in San Diego. We represent the Javros, longtime residents and business people in Escondido. His report pretty much stole all my presentation, so I'm only going to make three points that I think are worth admission remembering. First one is, we did this without any SB ten. Very controversial, your city doesn't do it yet, but I wanted you to know that you can do these projects, achieving plenty of affordable housing onsite, plenty of density bonus, enough to make it pencilable without having to introduce the controversy of SB ten. And that's because of clever staff and clever consulting team. The second thing is, this project will further your arena objectives. There's no existing units on the site right now, and we're going to be adding twenty-one, three of which are very low income, so it's a net gain for the city's effort. And then it may strike you as surprising, but there's less traffic with this much larger building than there is with the current use because it's all commercial. We're keeping the very important corner. Staff told us from the very beginning, we want the corner of Ninth Avenue and Escondido Boulevard to be special. We want this building to be a paradigm as the area begins to redevelop, because it's a great area eventually, and we're very pleased to be here. I will say, I've been working in Escondido for many, many years. This is the first project I've ever brought to here. There's more coming, but they're much longer, and I urge your support. We support staff's recommendation. Thanks.
Thank you.
And by the way, Eric Nasson is here from Studio E to answer any questions you might have about the building. John Sanchez is here from the traffic engineers as well.
Thank you. Anyone have questions of staff?
Yes, my first question is going to be basically a density bonus one for me, but in the staff report, it mentions applicant is entitled to the following concessions, so is that indicating to me that no matter what three concessions that the applicant requests, we're obligated to grant those three concessions, or is there room for nullification?
The law says you shall grant.
No, I can qualify that for you. So, so sorry, Jay, but I just jumped in and give the legal standard, because there is legal standard. So there's a difference, first of all, between incentives, concessions, and then waivers. Those are two different things. Incentive and concession is the same thing. So that standard is, the city shall grant the concession or incentive unless the city makes a written finding based upon substantial evidence of any of the following, and there are three things. The concession does not result in identifiable and actual cost reductions, and it's the city's burden to show that. B, this concession would have a specific adverse impact upon public health, safety, or the physical environment. Or three, the concession would be contrary to state or federal law. So those are the three things that would allow you to deny a requested incentive or concession.
Okay, all right.
Do you need to give you a standard for waiver?
It's going to be my next question, because, in my understanding, effectively what I have found, they can seek a waiver from development standards which could physically preclude the construction of the project. So my question was going to be, do they have to demonstrate to staff that any of these waivers they're requesting does preclude the construction, or do they have to prove it to planning commission?
They do not have a burden of proof there, so no, and there's actually case law that indicates it's a pretty lenient standard in favor of developer on this. So, but that is the current standard. They are entitled to a waiver of development standards that would physically preclude the development, the density permitted.
Thank you. Now, this question is for Jay, so turn off your microphone.
Okay, I just want to do, sorry, because we were talking about waivers, I just want to clarify that the requested waiver of the condition to fund the CFD, that's not actually technically a waiver for density bonus law. That is actually, falls under the definition of an additional financial incentive, so the city is not required to grant that.
But this body can make a recommendation to the city council if we support their request.
Yes, absolutely.
Jay?
Yes.
If we did not support tandem parking, what would the alternative be?
I believe the applicant could request additional parking waivers for the project. You could potentially lose additional parking spaces.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but when I think tandem parking, I'm picturing one space that would be occupied by two vehicles when the tenants arrive to their home location or visitors, with, then I see the frustration of one tenant who initially parked there having the frustration of getting the other tenant to remove the vehicle so he can exit the parking space.
Right. We've had this before, and we try to control it in different ways. So, for instance, the project that's getting ready, very close to breaking ground, sixteen hundred South Escondido Boulevard, was a density bonus project with tandem parking. And tandem parking, we make the project do a specific parking management plan. So those tandem units are only programmed for one unit, so they have to be two-bed, so they have to coordinate their time. You can't have one for separate units, and that's in the conditions and/or the parking management plan for the project, so it's an onsite programming item. So they have several, two, or most of them are two-bedroom. So they'll need to figure out which ones are programmed for those twelve, and then which ones get the single spaces for the project. So it'll be an ongoing management item.
Okay. Chairman Paul, when I asked that question, I saw Mr. Whalen raise his hand. Did Mr. Whalen want to address that?
No, I was thinking, and I said, two units, two spaces, same people.
I thought it was a USC fan.
Yeah.
Right on, Jim. Those are all your questions.
Okay, anyone else?
I do have a question. So this is exciting, there's a lot that I like about this, but I am going to just bring up a concern regarding parking. So we're looking at DAF report, item three, page fifty-nine, where it says, "The project requires a minimum of twenty-nine residential spaces for the twenty-one units and sixteen spaces for the forty-two hundred square foot commercial component." So it goes from forty-five down to twenty-seven spaces, is how I'm understanding it, is that correct? Okay. And then it says that there are fourteen parking spaces that Petersons is now allowing, or maybe in the future will allow?
They currently have a parking agreement with Petersons for to utilize their underutilized spaces. Petersons Donut has more parking spaces than the code requires, so they currently have a recorded private agreement to use them, and they can continue to do that with Petersons. However, for the staff report, I wanted to indicate in there that the terms of that agreement, those parking spaces could go away, so they can't count on that in perpetuity.
Yeah, that's my concern, and Petersons is expanding, it's going to a larger, larger facility just on the other side of the lot, so I'm wondering how much more parking they're going to be utilizing. So again, that's not a guarantee, which concerns me, and then the street parking's going to be a hit and miss, so is there?
I think, yes, street parking is, you know, first come, first served, so it's there, but it's not guaranteed there. In the future too, with circulation element, designs could change for South Estadio Boulevard, not perceived in the future, but equitable.
As I was saying, I like, there's a lot that I like about it, I like the pros of the improvement in the area, the walkability. I drove around the area, there's three markets in the area, there's a school just about four blocks away, there's actually a medical urgent care facility about a block and a half from there, bus stops.
Judy?
But the parking is...
We're on questions for...
Okay, I'm sorry, but the parking is, how are we, the street parking, how would we be able to go from, or how do we go from forty-five to twenty-seven, just that, I'm just having a hard time. I'm just trying to think how that would work.
That's because they're requesting a complete waiver of the parking spaces for the project, and they will rely on what's available on the street, similar to downtown Escondido, downtown has some municipal parking lots.
I want to continue on the parking. I'm confused, because we're talking about twenty-one units, some of these are two-bedroom units, correct? And those, we said two-bedroom units will have two tandem parking, so how do you get, I'm confused, how do you get twenty-one units with twenty-seven parking spaces? And some of those are two, how do you, how do you, if we're saying that the two-bedroom units are going to have at least two cars, how are we getting twenty-seven out of twenty-one units? We're not getting two parking spaces for every two-bedroom unit, is that correct?
Not necessarily. Some of them, because of the tandem, will have. Those are going to be probably decisions when they go for rent, and decisions that renters will have to make on availability of parking and use of public transportation versus parking when they use those and management for the sites. So those will be decisions on when you rent something or purchase condominiums is available parking, and is that a decision you're going to want to make on rented property?
My question is, what options are there for increasing the number of parking units? Is that an option? Are there options? What consideration was given to increasing that?
Because this was a density bonus, the ability to mandate additional parking because they have, they requested incentives, so you have that continuing balance right there. What's the appropriate parking mix for the project, given that this is one of the high-quality transporters for the city, per standard, and those transportation opportunities along South Estadio Boulevard. If this weren't a density bonus type of project, one project comes to mind, which was five-five-five West Grandin. Their last couple of weeks, they've been breaking ground, the old gas station right there, Grandin and Quince. That project, because it was more units, and they had two and three, I can't remember if they had four bedroom units, so the families would be larger with that. They had a similar parking ratio, but they were going to install those testers inside the facility. I think there were six or more of them set up, but that was, I think, a higher density project. Was it considered for this because of the density bonus component and some of the limitations that the city has regarding it?
Okay, anyone else?
On a separate topic, I'm trying to understand the, you kind of went over this already, but I don't know that I caught it all. Along Escondido, we had, are we, we're changing, we're changing the designation along Escondido, is that correct?
Correct. That one parcel, so you've got on this picture over here, on this one, you've got this parcel here that's in the Escondido Boulevard district, but the commercial district. The mixed-use district doesn't start until south of Eleventh, and the height was up there to accommodate that kind of density. Now, on Ninth Avenue here, that does have an excuse overlay that allows twenty-four dwellings for every four mixed-use projects and a higher building height to effectively accommodate those uses. Now, I think the thought on South Estadio Boulevard, especially on that corner, was to try to preserve those as a commercial. So what, to do that, the project will be proposing the mixed-use, so the ground level maintains that commercial level, that was envisioned for that, but then how do you accommodate that, those densities? So they've requested to extend that mixed-use overlay onto that single parcel, which would bring mixed use, a little bit higher density than the Ninth Avenue, that's right next to, that would allow multi-family, multi-story development, but on to that corner. They had approached the, to do it all in one shot, the Petersons units, potentially to get that whole corner in there, but they didn't get it back.
So Jay, my interpretation of this was, you're going to extend all the way from Eleventh all the way up to Ninth, right? Not just the one?
Just the one parcel.
Oh, it's not the whole?
It's not just that one parcel.
Okay, I misunderstood.
So effectively, the corner unit becomes purpose, is what you're saying?
It's a purpose bill, yeah, just for that part.
So what we're doing is, we're saying, we're essentially applying the mixed-use overlay to that corner lot, but we're somehow keeping the bottom floor commercial.
Because the mixed-use overlays in that area require, for mixed use, they have to get that density. So you mean to enact that commercial for that division for that area.
Okay. Thank you very much, Jay. Deliberation. Go ahead, Cara, you look like you're dying to say something.
I'm such a fan of this project. I think it is going to revitalize a desperately needed neighborhood corner. My background is in architecture and interior design, so I'm very familiar with everything you presented. I think, I'm just, it's time that Escondido turned the corner and start to revitalize our neighborhood. I'm really excited about this. I walked to Peterson Donuts, I live in old Escondido, so if I walk down there, I just cannot wait to see a, not look across and see a liquor store. It's just going to do wonders, and I'm so excited for our planning department to carry
Thank you for the presentation and also the presentation, the comments from our developer. I'm just curious, I did see this comment from a resident on Eighth Avenue, I think it is, and I'm just curious, I first...
I'm sorry to interrupt you. Thank you for reminding me. Do we have written or oral comments?
I think we're supposed to read this out.
As of this moment, we have received written comments prior after the agenda's published record. However, they do not need to be read into the record at this point in time. The city council decided that they have been provided to all the commissioners to read or review. We have received one oral comment of not wishing to speak, but registering their position in favor from Mr. Michael Jeff, as all of us have read.
And there's no other oral comments? All right, thanks, guys. All right, sorry, Jay.
That's okay. I was actually wondering if the resident was actually here to stand behind their comments. In any case, it was on Eighth Avenue, and when I read this, and then I drove it around the site a few times, it strikes me that there probably will be overflow, you know, traffic wanting to park potentially on Eighth Avenue to access the project. And I can see where, you know, all our conversations around parking are obviously being felt by the community as well, and so pursuant to that, if I may just ask the developer, has there, was there any community outreach around this project? Did you reach out to them?
Only immediate surrounding area, not all the way over to Eighth Avenue.
So commercial?
The Eighth Avenue.
Okay, thank you.
But also on that note of parking, in that complaint, it is noted that it is not the influx of coming tenants, it is the problem of overcrowding on the street of Eighth Avenue. And I just want to point that out, that was what stood out for me, is that it's the continued overcrowding in the city of multiple families living in one single home dwelling with ten cars.
Right.
So I don't...
Well, they do mention also their visitors or their vehicles of the new tenants, so I think it's a combination, really. But anyway, I just point that out because I think that's obviously going to be a continuing problem, challenge for city staff. But otherwise, I think I'm in support of this project. I kind of agree with Carrie. I live down in District Four, and I'm really pleased to see that Escondido Boulevard is starting to get some attention.
I would, I'd echo some of that as well. I do appreciate the project and the effort that's been put forth. I appreciate the presentation as well. I would also echo my concerns and maybe amplify them somewhat. I hear the complaints... I hear the complaints, I hear, you know, obviously, as was characterized, some of these complaints relate to residents that are currently there in the area and in residences, but having a multitude of vehicles per residence, I think we're going to add to that frankly. I think when we have 21 units and we provide 27 parking stalls, we're going to put more traffic, more parking issues in the area. Not sure what we can do about it, but it does, I hear the residents, I echo their concerns. I wish we could do more about that.
So, so I just have one comment about the parking, too. So these are, these will be nice, you know, thousand square foot to 1,200 square foot apartment. They'll be very nice, but they will not attract a higher income person because they don't have, they won't have the parking. So you're really, the developer, in my opinion, is limiting who wants to move, who wants to live in this, in this place. So the wealthier person isn't going to, isn't going to deal with it. They're just going to move on and live somewhere else. But, you know, but we need, we need residents, I mean, you know, places to live for everybody's income, and so I'm in favor of this project, too.
But Rick, that's just simply not true. And I know this because I work on developments like this. And market rate apartments, there's a lot of people that don't have to have a car anymore because there's such a major workforce that works from home. You know, there are a lot of people out there, which I constantly tell you all the time, from my experience working on these types of developments, a lot of people are not looking to have a car anymore. You know, and these are the people in higher income brackets that can make that choice, and they do. So I don't believe that that's true. Market rate apartments bring, bring the people that have better jobs that work from home. I just want to point that out because I will fight everyone on the parking thing all the time. People are not buying as many cars as they need.
The that are derived are from formulas that aren't realistic.
Okay. Do I have a, can I get a motion?
We did not have a chance to comment.
Oh, I'm sorry, David. I was looking at you, but you were looking the other way.
Okay, well, I kind of commented earlier in my, when I was asking the question, but I think, you know, after, my first thing here was, my first day on the job here was with the East Valley specific plan and how I didn't feel that this would fit there. I think that this is, this is a good fit here because of everything that's surrounding it. But yeah, but my concern still is parking. But again, there is growth, we can stop growth, and, you know. So yeah, I'm in agreement. I do like it.
David?
Okay, so I will begin with saying that, yes, this is the type of development we need in Escondido as we've built out. If we're going to provide future housing, this is the direction we're going to be going, not that direction. I also feel that this is a very quality project. I love the architecture. Where's the architect? Okay, it's a very good job. So this is a quality project that I help or hope would help stimulate a revitalization of Desmond Boulevard, which is in so desperate need about it. Now, I believe the city needs to do everything it can to encourage more low-income housing coming to Escondido. And state law allows the city in a project like this to provide direct financial incentives to encourage the development of low-income housing and to make the project feasible. This planning commission on two prior projects on South Escondido Boulevard recommended to the city council that we grant an exemption in the community facilities' district fees because this is a rental project providing low-income housing. I would prefer to support a motion supporting the project that also made a similar recommendation to the city council on this project, keeping in mind also that the city council acted favorably on our recommendation and did exempt those two projects on South Escondido Boulevard. That's my comment.
Okay, do I have a motion? Is that a motion?
Okay. I will move staff report to approve the project with the recommendation by the planning commission to the city council that as this project is a rental complex providing low-income housing, that they be exempt from the community facility district fees.
All right, do I have a second? Call for the vote.
Voting has been opened. The vote is four to two in favor, with Chair Paul and Commissioner Spear voting.
Okay, thank you very much, everyone. All right. Current business, none. Future agenda items, this is an opportunity for the commissioners to recommend something they want to talk about.
I do want to bring up, if we could, see if staff could maybe, when it comes time to sending out the information before our next meeting, if we could send it in a group email to make sure that everybody gets it, so nobody's name is missed. I got my information pretty late, and it was hard to kind of cram and try to come well-prepared. Would it be possible to have it all sent out in a group so we make sure that nothing's missed on the emails?
So when city staff distributes the agenda packet for commission digitally, we do send it to all listed commissioners as we've documented in our planning commission roster. That's the email on file that if you received the public comment for the item we just reviewed, if you received that via email from me today, that's the email we distribute to for all correspondence, and we do send it as one group. We just have, we BCC for the purposes of Brown Act, so.
Okay. Yeah, that's just, I'm perplexed. Okay, thank you.
So, so I'm not sure if I should want to talk about this here or now, but okay, but I'm going to then. So future agenda items, we had something on this tentative future agenda items list. I asked to talk about the North County Mall, and that got pushed aside to just to wait for Costco. Now that Costco's gone, that's come off of this list instead of saying, oh, now we can talk about the North County Mall.
So if planning commission would like to have a history of the North County Mall, we certainly can provide that through a current business item if that's still interested. The only item that, I guess it was removed. Costco was specifically removed because of their formal withdrawal from the city, but if North County Fair history is of interest, we can put it back on the TFA.
Okay, so my request was not the history of the North County Mall. That was a compromise recommended by the city attorney. So I'd rather not wait for the staff to do that, and instead I'd like to agendize a discussion on the future uses for that site.
And may I ask?
And staff doesn't need to present a staff report.
And may I ask or add, would it be possible for us to be briefed on how the Costco fell apart, or is that a closed session I do with the city council?
It's not a closed session, I don't, you know what, honestly, I'll have to just check on that. I'm not sure.
Thank you, because I'm hearing rumors, and I'd rather hear facts.
I can check on that with you. And so Chair Paul, regarding your item, I believe per the bylaws, you would just need to suggest that, and somebody else, I think you have to have a second.
Right, and I did that before, and I'm willing to do that again. Do I have a second?
Second.
So just, what exactly are we seconding then? You're just talking about, could you describe?
Agenda, an agenda item for us to talk about the future of the North County Mall.
And to clarify, is there anything from staff you would expect prepared?
No.
Justed one.
Understood.
Oral communications, anyone in the audience would like to talk about anything not on the agenda? All right. Planning commissioners' report, anything else you guys? All right. Tentative future agenda.
All right, so as we just discussed, and you all are more than aware, Costco has withdrawn, so Costco was removed from the TFA currently for private development projects. We only have one more plant regularly scheduled planning commission meeting in 2023, and that is December 12th, where there will be one project brought forth to planning commission. That's a four-unit mixed-use development on Grand Avenue, four units above the Grand Avenue Tea Room. So that will be the item before you that evening, and then January 9th will be the first meeting in 2024.
I'm sorry, could you repeat the date for me? The slow guy over here. The tw- December?
December 12th.
Okay, the 12th.
Mm-hmm. And then January 9th.
So nothing, nothing the second week?
No.
Sorry, I misunderstood.
That's no problem unless we think we would have quorum on December 26th.
No. Okay, meeting adjourned. Thanks, everyone. Great meeting.